For Thursday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. And if you would stand with me, please, for the play.
I'd like to make a pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There it is.
Leave me seated.
Leave me seated. All right. Well, first on our agenda as usual, we have the public comment portion to our meeting. So I will, at this point, open up the floor to anyone who would like to address the board. And I don't believe that there's anyone who is interested in doing that this evening. And so I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. We will move directly to village board business. Number one on our agenda tonight, we have, we often do approval of the minutes from September twenty-fifth. I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Mayor Byard?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee, uh, trustee Abalito?
I believe that I will the pledge. And Carl, did the pleas be seated?
I'm sorry, I'll need that changed, sir.
Am I right on that?
Yes, you are, actually.
Good comment, Jerry.
Apologies.
You may.
I will change that.
So.
Trustee.
All right.
I'll change that. Trustee Maranti?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that correction, Jerry.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
The record reflects.
Let the record show.
Record reflects. All right, we move now to claims and warrants. And, uh,
A little after you.
They were pretty tangible.
Yeah, you think?
Where'd you say it, the, uh, Brits? Where'd you say it?
What? Old Napa?
Yeah.
I'll just say the host hotel.
Rich Carlton was calling you.
No, uh.
How many natives is it?
I see that it's very old hotel. Uh, four nights.
Four natives?
Yep.
Right on Main Street?
Wait, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, yeah. Um, yes.
They're really, uh, archi- neat, architectural, wonderful.
It's beautiful, yeah. I played it, I stayed at the. I forgot what it's called, but it's really, really old, so I forgot the water.
I thought it was Sarah Toga. Yeah, okay. If you stayed at Sarah Toga, you'd hear quite a variety of modern meaning.
Oh, yeah.
It's not really that far.
No, Lake Placid was high.
Nice.
Hotel actually has a lot of history. They were, um, involved in getting the, uh, bringing the original Olympics to Lake Placid. They're on the committee, very cool.
I don't think this is village business.
Sorry. It's a little history lesson, sir.
Uh, Jake, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, when they cut down the trees, I see that there's six thousand dollar bill here for tree removal. One, two, three, four of them. Is there any way that, uh, that wood could be cut and used? I mean, when they cut it, I assume they have to cut it into smaller log pieces. I'm wondering if we could add it, uh, you know, so that village people who have a stove, and I'm sure that there are many of them with a wood stove, might have the wood. I mean, they charge us to take it down, I understand. And then they take it away and they get to sell it, so I'm just wondering, I'm curious about it.
That's a good question. I can, I can ask them. So I know sometimes if they're going down, people will request it and they'll drop it down in their yards. Uh, but typically leave them in pretty long lengths, so they'll have a apprentice lower a gum and load up a truck and take it away and then ship the smaller stuff. But I certainly ask.
I don't know, cuts trees, birch cuts?
Yeah, they're, they're in the, the.
Cause some of those guys, they, they have deals with firewood sellers where they sell the logs to the, someone that's gonna chop them up and sell the firewood.
Yeah.
I don't know if Birchgrass does, but, so they kind of can charge you less to take down a tree cause they're gonna make money off the wood.
Yeah.
Well, if they're, if they are doing that, making, charging us less, I, I can understand. If they're not, it would be the same cost. You know, it's just an idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Like, if someone can use a.
Where, where would this store it? Where? People have bins or I staffed with a lot of dry.
No, they cut it, they cut a tree down, you know.
Oh, where would you, where would you?
And before the residents can come and pick it up, you've got it.
I know, I mean, we'd have to have an announcement or whatever and say that we're doing it. So it wouldn't be an immediate thing. But I'm just looking down the road that, uh.
Yeah, it'd be, if I went to turn this, if we had a yard somewhere we can put it, but I wouldn't want somebody to come with a chainsaw and work on how to prep it.
No, you'd have to have, you'd have to have village people cut it up and rent a splitter and put it, keep it somewhere where people can come and pick it up.
Yeah, was that a support?
So then it would just be free, free wood for?
Or have a waiting list to advance.
Or you can charge.
Yeah, charge them.
I mean, for wood now, split ninety-five dollars. You could do it.
And, and what is our policy? Are you delivering it, whether they want it in the backyard, behind the shed? They have to complete it?
But anyways, it's just that I want.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Did I?
It's something I just, we can certainly ask and see if there's other places to do it. I could even ask them, hey, it would be to, we'd be, you know, six foot length, so we can put it in the back of a truck and take it somewhere and dump it in somebody's driveway or something like that.
She just like donated to police guys and things like that.
Was that the same concept as the mulch they do in the town? Where they, they have all the mulch and the, and the.
All the logs down there.
That people, you know, come by and fill their trucks with free mulch?
Yes.
How do they, I mean, how do they do that?
Maybe right there, too.
They probably turned this to.
All right, well, thank you. Um, anybody have any, um, anything more on the bill?
No, except my hand hurt after signing out.
All right, well, I'll ask for a motion to approve claims and warrants.
Well, Daryl, I will give you that motion, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I will second it.
Trustee Abalito?
Really like a partnership. On the eye?
Trustee Lauer?
Yes.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Maranti?
Aye.
Mayor Byard?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, next we have a resolution to approve, uh, claims, excuse me, budget mods.
Yeah, that's a fine.
The, uh, yeah, there are, but, um, these are the ones, uh. Well, yeah, we'll, we'll do our current ones first. Um, we have a number of things. And the first is, uh, reason is MMB year-end entries and payroll and payable accruals. And you can see that they're coming out of snow removal group help and being put into buildings, village hall personnel, roads, retirement, social security. Total on that, I believe, is something on the order of, uh, twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. The second, we have, uh, MMB year-end entries and payroll and payable accruals. And we're taking money from, um, contingent, contingency, twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, as well as sledge hauling, can we afford that? Nineteen thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And it's being used for legislative trustee personnel, air personnel, legal sewer treatment personnel, sewage treatment equipment, gasoline, retirement, and social security. And finally, we have, uh, MMB year-end entries, coming out of contingency, five thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. And also, it looks like here, um, coming out of sidewalk equipment, capital, pub lay and engineering professional services, as well as contingencies.
A lot of, on vacation.
So anyway, we have these general fund budget modifications instead of four twenty-four, twenty-five. These are for last year. And, uh, so I just wanna make note of that. These are things that, uh.
And then we'll get into that ones for twenty-five.
Twenty-six. So I have the motion to approve these, but odds and payment of our bill from twenty-four, twenty-five.
So have these been made yet?
The, the auditors just completed it. Just, so we just got notification that those were the entries that Danielle needs to make. She just got it last week.
So they're made now?
Yeah.
So.
Well, not until.
This is a conclusion to twenty-four, twenty-five.
Not until you, until you approve it, but.
Okay. I was thinking it was like our bills that.
No.
Moving in the turds.
No, she'll do, she'll do it when you approve it.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Maranti?
Aye.
Mayor Byard?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we still don't have our A and D. And from the audit, we're still waiting for that, too. So the school district sometimes comes for us, so we're still waiting on that. And hopefully we'll get that before Danielle leaves.
Do you want me to make a call?
Yeah.
Um, what we do have next is a general fund budget mod for twenty-five, twenty-six. And, uh, the first one is, um, shelving units. I believe that these are for, um.
Chris.
Yep.
Um, next we have more time spent in cell relying than budgeted for, um, three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars thirty-nine cents. We have a difference in budget due to rounding, twenty-eight cents. And, uh, finally, we have a correct of the budget. And this is a, uh, this is a switch. The installment purchase debt principle, where it says we're taking out of actually is being put in, the two thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixteen or thirty-two cents. And, uh, so it's just because those two were switched. So. That's a motion to approve.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Trustee Maranti?
Aye.
Mayor Byard?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have, I think that, uh, probably should have ended a while ago, but, uh, this is a resolution to authorize the treasurer to transfer ninety-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars out of unreserved fund balance to the general fund vehicle replacement reserve. And ninety-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars is money that was received from the sale, I believe, right, Jake? Of four vehicles or four items that came out of EPW.
Yeah, so it was three or four, right?
Right. And, um, I know that you have asked and looked for, um, money going into a general fund for vehicle replacement service. So that you don't have to continually look at the general budget to take money out of it. So this is setting this up going into a replacement, vehicle replacement reserve. Okay? So it's taking the money out of our unreserved fund balance that was put in because of the sale of those vehicles and equipment, bringing it into a vehicle replacement reserve. I'd make that motion.
I second it.
Mayor Byard?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Maranti?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We will move next to town.
Just a couple of things. So Carl sent you his proposed local law and outside parking of recreational vehicles. Is there a consensus of the board to go forward with it or not?
No.
Well, cause they're three people. Cause I don't wanna go through and schedule a public hearing and all that stuff if the consensus isn't to go forward.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
All right. So I'll, I'll prepare, uh, for the next meeting, a resolution to set a public hearing.
Okay.
And, you know, you can change this if you want, like, before we get to that. Because if, if we make any amendments, you gotta have another public hearing on the amendments. So, you know, if you wanna have a discussion about this, perhaps we should have a discussion before we set it for a public hearing. Cause there's some things that frankly probably need to be discussed.
Well, the whole thing around, if it's a, I don't like making the proposed laws or changes based on one situation or one person. If we start doing that, if we start doing that as a board, that's a problem.
It's that one. Cause five or six right now.
Right.
I know, and the boats and all that stuff, I'd tell they saw it.
I guess it depends, uh, on the eyes or.
Have a definition in terms of.
You're, you're, you're gonna put bigger burden on your residents for sure. Now they're gonna have to store things, move them.
Well, a boat is considered a recreational vehicle under the proposed definition.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
So.
I don't know how many people there are that store a boat that's more than thirty people.
Well, that's true. We probably aren't very many that have a thirty-foot or longer boat sitting in their driveway.
Right.
You say, residents go by and see that this particular trailer or that one is parked in the driveway, then it's okay for me to put mine there rather than take it down and store it someplace. It's a. It's, it's what seems like it's happening to me. I go around the streets all the time and I see those trailers all over the place, so. And it's, I repeat, I do it so I can.
This essentially is the same, is the same as with the town, except the town, it's forty feet, not thirty feet.
Right.
So the town's a little more liberal.
It's patterned after the town.
Well, otherwise, and, and, and the town doesn't have the, the number seven about, "The camper trailers and motor homes shall not be occupied but lived in for an extended period of time." Then I question, how is that, how are you gonna enforce that? Like, who, what, what's?
We're gonna do camper surges.
What is an extended period of time? Are you saying that if I have a less than thirty-foot length motor home or camper sitting in my driveway, which is allowed, like, I can't get my kids sleepover in it in the summer or, you know?
Yeah, we did it all the time, bro.
Huh?
I said the main.
You're saying that's okay, right? So, but you've got this extended period of time. What's an extended period? You wanna define that? And if you define it, who's gonna keep track of it? Those lights have been on for, you know, three days in a row. I just don't know how it's, whether it's enforceable. I understand, I understand, you don't, you don't want somebody like renting out their, their motor home and having somebody else live in there, but.
Well, you're not even supposed to do that with your house, though. You know?
Well, you can rent out your house.
Well, now, if you're, if you have multiple tenants at home and it's, you have to have a different permit to do so. You can't.
Well, it's gotta be zoned.
Yeah, so I think.
But I don't know.
Yeah, definitely has to be zoned there.
If you think that it's best that we remove number seven.
Well, I just wonder how it, how you're, how, how it gets enforced. Like, you're gonna have Chris go around and, you know, cause.
I'll just remove it.
Forget it, the Webster please, you'll never get the Webster please to enforce it.
Yeah, they're not out here.
So then you're looking at the building inspector to, to what, at night? See if the lights are on first, why it doesn't work at night?
Oh, he's gonna stir it.
No. Uh, take, remove number seven.
All right, so, so we'll, we'll take seven.
I'm okay with that.
So we'll, we'll take seven out and, uh, we'll redistribute it along with a resolution to set a public hearing.
I don't think I have.
And see where it goes.
Wrong meeting.
It's not zoning board.
No. I just forgot. Cause he got us. Yeah.
While you're, while you're in it, could you look at one seventy-five fifty-three H? Where it says gives an exception in paragraph E, should you say E and I? If this is the new one, seventy-five fifty-three I? The existing one gives exceptions where you can park it in a side area for now more than six months.
Yeah, so.
This one's seventy-five fifty-three A, that's the one that you can't park anywhere other than the driveway. But then there's a new one directs people to park things outside the driveways. We're gonna be this. So I don't understand.
So is this about seasonal or like, we wanna have some. One seventy-five, cause he's. Cause there's a provision in there, too, that they can go to zoning board, give our lease.
And decide your house for no more than six months.
So if someone says, oh, I wanna have it there from April to October, they can get with the zoning board and get that approved, right?
Or we make it easier on the resident, have that in the law.
Just say that you can park it there for this, for this month.
Means it's voting season and you're catching.
I don't know where the dates are, but.
All right, that's.
What's, what's the town handling there?
This is times on the.
This is just like the town.
Yeah, so you're dictating a size boat someone could have, basically is what you're doing.
Yep.
So what's next? No dogs and cats in the same house?
Cam licenses.
No cats would be fine. Um, well, what if we had it consistent with the town?
It is.
But I mean.
Size wise.
Size wise, I mean.
There's this forty, what?
First is thirty-five, correct?
Thirty.
I think it's a thirty in the, uh.
It is thirty, this one was proposed.
Well, being proposed currently.
I'm not a camper, what's the cabin size of these things? Thirty to forty?
Is that putting the tongue or is it the box length? Cause he, I'm serious, I mean.
They do count that, right?
Yeah, they used to, you used to be able to look at a trailer and it was a twenty-eight RPLS or something. It's twenty-eight foot, but that was a twenty-eight foot box. Uh, twenty-eight foot box is gonna be really.
Thirty?
Thirty-four foot trailer, probably by the time you get the rear bumper and the truck on it. So, I mean, this would be, honestly, it would be down to like a twenty-four, twenty-five foot trailer. If you include the draw, if you don't include the draw, then it's the length of the box, built the trailer or the.
Yeah, they just got the length of the box.
You have to distinguish between, you know, what is hard on Main Street.
Maybe what the hard position that block measures trailers and.
No vehicle unit is all one unit versus, as Jake's not one of, a separate unit. And you could have that thirty-foot separate unit or thirty-five without getting a vehicle. I mean.
So then would you designate it the class of vehicle? The class of motorhome?
What if you had five thousand residents in the village, right? How many people here, you saw a handful.
I just think that what you'll see further is, uh, others putting their stuff in the driveway.
Probably in a, here, there, you could say, I don't, I don't.
Well, it's just trying to prevent that from happening.
That's like saying that nobody at Webster uses weed because we don't have a weed shop in the village. Well, to me, I'm just saying, to me, you guys had the voting, but to me, it, it's not a big enough problem to make a change at this point, in my opinion, for a handful of people out of.
I know, I agree.
Residents. Right, that's why we're at this stage.
Well, what compromise would be having it consistent with the town's policy? And have, there would be consistency even in the village and the town, everybody's on the same.
You know, retirement's a problem, it's during the winter for storage.
Like, one of the reasons I think the town, if I can interject, why the town is long, you know, they typically have sixty or seventy-foot setbacks where the village, you know, very often.
Oh, they have a, okay, based on property sizes?
Yeah, I think.
The difference?
Yeah, I would think because their setbacks are a lot of times, I mean, most of the chance track is probably sixty foot, but a lot of them, like the old village and Main Street are sometimes twenty feet. Um, and that would be another question I'd have, is the street measured? Is it from the right away or is it from the edge of the curb? You know, it says twenty feet back from the edge of the, or from the street, but.
Right.
Well, if it was the right away, then.
Yeah, that'd be way up.
Yeah.
It would be from.
It's not, it's, well, it says street, so it's not right away.
Right. Defined differently in another section, when they said you measure all the right away and it's all long. Not this part, it's completely different, that's why I wanna make sure.
I would agree that it should be the street.
Don't confuse it with the other part, cause.
Right, it says street, I just don't know where, how it is in definitions, that's why.
Right away, that's the public street. All in their law.
And I don't understand this, why don't we just get rid of this, where it says, "Unregistered recreational vehicles and boats may be stored outdoors for up to six months." Why only six months? I think, what is the point of that? So after six months, you gotta register it or you gotta get rid of it?
People winter lay up to avoid insurance and registration costs.
Why?
Winter lay up when it's not in use.
Well, that's fine, but why just six months? Why not?
That's the normal winter layup, let them have it unregistered, sitting in their side yard or rear yard for as long as they want.
I think the intent was, we used to, now I think trailers and RVs, a lot of them are annual, but they used to be able to shut them up in the winter, so you could, you know, you wouldn't have any insurance on them or something, saving a little dough. So a lot of times people take the plates off of them and then they're, they're, they would only have them registered for part of the year or so. Rather than having, there's another section that says you can't have an unregistered vehicle in your yard. But an unregistered RV, you can have, it's only a front wall on the side of the building. There, it's just like the side of your garage, it's something before, behind the front lane of the house.
Yeah.
Um, is what it says, you know, then you can have it there for up to six months. And I don't know if it says RV or any vehicle, but it says unregistered.
It says, it says recreational vehicles and boats. But then it doesn't define recreational vehicles anywhere in the village code currently.
So if I have fun driving my truck, I can, don't have to have it registered.
Well, but I just don't see the point, cause Carl's proposal just says you can park, you can park a, rip an, an RV in the side yard. And it doesn't say whether it's registered, unregistered, and it doesn't put a time period on. I, so, so what's the differ, why, why this registered versus unregistered?
And unfortunately, in the village.
And why does the village, why does the village care if, look, it's up to the owner. If they, if they don't wanna insure it or whatever, pay the DMV cost, that's their choice.
But you, there's, like, we'll bank it forth, there's, I know a gentleman had several Mustangs parked outside and we got brakes and liners because they're unregistered vehicles, so you gotta. Well, this is a piece of metal there, if you put out there half pounds of piece of metal, now it's okay.
This section doesn't cover that, cause it only covers recreational vehicles and boats.
Yeah.
Not.
Well, what's a recreational vehicle, Don?
Huh?
What is a recreational vehicle?
Well, that's undefined at present in the village code.
I used to own a motorcycle.
Huh?
I used to have a motorcycle.
Thirty-four.
Motorcycle says recreational vehicle.
It was to me.
Anybody could say that about anything they drive.
If you're not defining it.
But that's why we will be defining it.
Yes.
That, that's any vehicle used for recreational purposes, including but limited to all train vehicles, boats, trailers. And nobody's gonna care if you pay their. And nobody's gonna care if you pay their motorcycle parked in your driveway, right? Because clearly less than thirty feet, you only have a thirty-five foot motorcycle.
So.
Yeah.
But it's still a recreational vehicle.
What about a business?
You can park, you can park your motorcycle.
Do you want a food truck?
What?
What about a food truck? If that's.
That's not, that's not a recreational vehicle.
Okay, so that can park there.
What?
Now, it's something that.
So you're at this here. So you could just, I got an idea. Make your vote look.
We define what a recreational vehicle, except.
I'd make a motion to take the list to a workshop if I was up there.
Well, the good thing is, Richard, you're not up here.
It already, it, right now, there's a section, business vehicles. No more than one commercial vehicle with more than four wheels shall be parked outdoors on any lot in a residential district. So I suppose you get a food truck that's only got four wheels, and that doesn't. It's not included. I don't know, you know?
So first thing you do is you, I think, when you ever come up with something, the first thing you do is identify, is this a problem, a major problem? Is it a priority? Those, to me, would be the first things you would ask yourself, is this a problem that we need to fix? If you all agree this is a major problem, then I guess you're going to. I think it is.
I'd like to identify where these other vehicles are.
Let Carl go around and take pictures.
I could do it.
Because we constantly, once brought to this board, it was one specific house in the group, and I don't think, like, get into picking things out and then also making changes based on person, location. If you see many more than you guys.
Well, my argument would be, well, one, if you, on Main Street, for instance, or anywhere in the village, you got three houses in a row that got those long trailers in their car. How's that look? Is it okay?
I mean, I don't know, is it part of their business, is it part of?
No, they're recreational vehicles.
They use, oh, I, I don't, if it's, I think it's all about how you keep your stuff and all that stuff, if you have something in your driveway and it's, it looks good and you're not hurting anybody, I don't unders, I don't, I don't think we should. I don't know, I don't think it's a critical, that's just my. And maybe if anyone on this board had an RV or a RV, maybe it'd be different.
I don't think I'd park a thirty foot boat in my driveway.
You're probably gonna, you're probably gonna be RVing it soon.
I don't think so. Two weeks. I don't think so.
He's going Florida, Casely, why would you not just do it?
It's violation.
I'm standing.
You see, it's a odd school.
No.
See, if you put a lane on it, then you're fine, and have a fair turn.
No trouble.
So it's, one of the things I would suggest, and this, luckily isn't my decision, um, look back at the building inspector's reports for the last, well, twenty years since I've been about the village. One of the things is unregistered vehicle, or not unreg, there's some unregistered vehicles, but there's vehicles parked on the lawn, is something that they send out a lot of violations for. In this, we're gonna, I'm assuming we're gonna still maintain that part and still tell people they can't park their car on the lawn while directing them to park a camper on the lawn.
That's a good point.
Seems, I understand the intent, but also, a lot of calls, people will be like, I don't wanna look at this in my backyard, now you can tell somebody, you got a big camper parked in your backyard. And then the backyard neighbor, because a lot of the village houses back up to somebody else, they're like, I don't wanna go off my backyard.
And watch when that grass and weeds grow around it, and then you can't weed whack it against your tires.
So I, I think.
It's the punch.
I get, I'm saying, that's one of the things that we get a lot, and we get a lot of complaints, is they're parking their car on the lawn, they're parking their car.
Put the heavier feet on the lawn.
It, but it's, it'd be kinda tough to go by, because we still have to uphold that part of it, so we go by and say, hey, you can't park your car on the lawn, but take your forty foot camper and put it on the lawn.
Well.
Well, that's a good point. Yeah, that's a really good point.
The problem is that it, what you're seeing is primarily on age.
To my earlier point.
But I don't know if there's any way to put it, the way the houses are and the property lines, I don't know if there's any way to put it aside.
Doesn't look like it, we're done on the same one.
In the old village, any place in the.
I'm talking about the same one, I did go by the other day and the driveway was full, and it was there, and the man had a car that was parked on the grass, covering the sidewalk and the grass. Now, that's a, that's a problem, so they have to, if you're having it in your driveway, it's gotta be in your driveway. You can't cause those other issues, um, and that, I did see that the other day.
What about if we specify, uh, something like East and West Main Street in the village? I mean.
Then it just seems like you're targeting a group of people.
Uh, you know, I'm just thinking about, we're trying to get people to come to the village and do their business here. So you drive into the village and see that piece of shit sitting there. Excuse me. Put that recreational vehicle sitting over there. I forgot where I came from.
Oh, buddy, good, that's crazy.
Anyway.
So I, I would table.
Yeah, let's table this and, and, and really think about it, right? You don't, I think sometimes it's best not to make knee-jerky decisions based on one or two issues out of a large population. That's also my opinion. But then we say, Rod.
You know?
And Jake's point actually adds a little more.
Great point.
Okay, okay.
Had a more, right? He takes out of the box, you know?
Yes.
Go research.
Sorry, come on.
Uh, Clark's office, anything from that?
Quickly, um, we did, I don't know if you recall, but we, um, let everybody know that we, the village secured the producer of New York cream. And we met with, um, representatives, um, recently, and I don't have my notes in front of me, but I did think this was really cool, that they're gonna start the survey soon, and it can be like a, it can take like a year. Um, but what's really awesome is if the homeowners, if they're, if the residents or the area of homes that are identified as historical, there is a tax benefit, um, available to, to do home improvements. And it's significant, yeah. And it, and it can, it's not a one-time thing as well, it can be used multiple times over multiple years. So, um, it's really, really cool, and I'll send out some more information, but so if you, if the area of the village, if you are in that, you may be eligible for tax benefit.
And it does not restrict in any way, you know, color.
Yep.
Et cetera.
And even though, it can be interior too, which is.
Include roofs.
Oh, they have a new roof, uh, twenty percent.
I believe so, yeah, they're very, they're very, very.
Inside as well as outside.
Um, flexible on what's included.
Like inside as well as outside.
Yeah, and it's very loosely monitored on what you can use it for, so, just wanted to give that update.
Uh, DPW, Stuart, and Ted, what you brought back from your?
Yeah, we were planning on giving a little synopsis of all the classes, but I, remarkable thing, I beat up the battery when I was there, so I was gonna send something out afterwards, but. I appreciate you guys letting me go to the night, I'm doing a lot of really good training.
Actually, that's a nice thing, yes.
I did too.
Six or eight classes every day and.
Is that Sarah Turner?
Yeah, no, this was Lake George.
Not a George class.
Yeah.
Nice.
But it was a lot of, you know, real good training, a lot of, a lot of different topics. And it's time, so believes, believe pick up something to start for next week, um, starting to get some files out there and.
I wanna say, don't put it in the gutters.
Which I say, and, and the, um, yeah, leave it out of the gutters, leave it out of the street.
When I saw the city today, I'm like, I wonder if we ever do that. They were driving through the streets with a truck with this monster air hose, and they were blowing stuff in, into the yards, pushing the leaves back into the yards. That were over thence and things like that, or along the curb. Do you ever, do we ever have a tool that would blow them out of the gutters and just push them back into the lawns?
We.
You know what I'm talking about?
We, we've talked about doing a track dryer sometime that, that you see in, uh, in NASCAR race, if they have a.
Track dryer.
Get a track dryer doing that, but I think we, we might not make it all the way down the street. Problem, so, you know, it's, I, I think it's just a good reminder and an adulation thing, we try to remind people, it's just not, they're, it's great when they're in the street, they pick up really easy. Bad part is when it rains, then, you know, it blocks all the drains, it's gonna flood your neighbor's house, your house, your neighbor's house, the things, when we remind people of that.
How long do you have to check those drains? Like, if they are getting clogged for someone.
We, we're kind of like this, we, we street sweep all the time, trying to keep those out, and then we'll go through and clean catch basins, you know, kinda going, going around, there's certain ones that we know are more problematic.
All right, too, you have a maintenance program on the.
Yeah, and, and you can clean them out, and then in the fall, especially depending on the type of tree around, you know, some of them, like the willow ones, that's such narrow little leaves, they fit right down in the grates really well. The bigger ones don't fit down the grate, so it floods the street faster, but keep it a little cleaner. Some of the DIs or the catch basins have sumps in them, so the material can go down in and be below the water, some of them don't, so it'll go down into the drain, so. Best thing is keep them out of the road, um, but if the trees are over the road, you're gonna drop them on there anyway, but try to do your best, not add to that. Um, and, and we'll go, you know, our goal is always to pick them up once, you know, make one full trip a week. Um, now, hard to leave season, I always say, maybe a week and a half, even up to two weeks, but we're still fighting for that once, you know, one trip around.
It's gotta be a weight drop, isn't it?
I, I think so, and I, when, we were, it's, I was just up at Lake George and, and they're not, I thought they'd be really colorful up there and turn, there's not a lot of turnout. High elevations are, but it's a lot of lake here.
It's true of the dryness of that.
Yeah.
Okay?
I have one more thing.
I got one too.
Oh.
We have a birthday coming up on Monday.
Holiday.
There.
National holiday.
Yes, they all, you obviously have it all.
To celebrate nearby.
DPW, you guys are off too.
Thank you.
Yes, Carl.
One. I was at the, um, bid meeting last week, and there were a few things that were brought up, um, mostly about the trick or treat trail, Saturday, October twenty-fifth. And the bid is asking all businesses to register online on the bid website. And then they all, if they register, they get a pumpkin in their window to let everybody know that they got the goodies. And, uh. Webster Hops is gonna have their food truck out there.
Oh, nice.
And so is, uh, Nelson's Ice Cream.
My boy.
Yeah.
And?
If anybody wants.
We got, and we got shoots.
Two?
Shoots.
And soup?
Shoots.
Yes, you can get an ice cream and soup at the same time.
Shoots is a donut. Shoots is a gum.
Yeah.
When did they change since last week?
I want to do it, yeah, they're coming.
Okay, and shoots is gum.
Here's Lisa's discrepancy.
With their, uh, donut truck. Further information, contact the, um, Webster bid site. Those of Webster.
Do you need more food up there?
I wanna table that.
What?
Sure, you hear me, if you wanna table that, it's good business.
Thank you, Carl.
Carl. You're gonna start telling people what kind of candy they're passing around. Only what you like.
Oh, God, don't we.
No.
Oh, no!
I wouldn't pass those.
Are you guys coming to, with your casters?
I will.
No.
Jerry's gotta wear his inside outfit.
I'm gonna dress up as a thirty foot trailer.
You're not allowed that.
All right, uh, next meeting is going to be October twenty-third, and there will be a village-town combination public hearing here on October twenty-first. That is a Tuesday at seven o'clock on the annexing of the, uh, to the village, a portion of Xerox's west campus. Those of you who are not aware of the proposal, Xerox would like to, um, have, have the village line moved. And the village would like to have that moved as well, uh, to the north, so that the entire west campus is in one municipality.
Yep.
That would allow Xerox to more easily sell off the property.
It's kind of like switching, uh, twenty-five acres.
Kind of decent.
Okay, so that would be the twenty-first at seven o'clock here. Anybody else have anything for the, if you are not, and I would entertain a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, second.
Oh, second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye, aye, because I'll have some lines.
Motion passed.
But I won't. Okay, good. Yeah, rich. My brother, one of my good friends is there. Does not go through the villages.
That's why I started doing yours, ready to.
So many people.
So, all in, one, it's not in the same order either.
So I did what your suggestion was originally, which is.
Was he, he wasn't given. I got it. Well, let's all turn to one side of us.
So I think, if you're the D C, you see why they wanted to, because there are so many municipalities where they're, they're, and they're the entity in charge, when they're generally, or forcing stormwater, training. So to the extent they can get everybody to have the same, so, local lives, that's what they're trying to do, it makes it easier.
That's the, uh, no.
Otherwise, they gotta have their guys go down.
So they, they have to watch the general, permanent number zero zero two.
Yeah.
And, they do as they perform, and then we're automatically, yeah, but suddenly.
What's the name?
Which I appreciate so much.
And what's the time?
I don't care one way or the other.
So it's a levy to.
I, I would have figured out why we changed it before we made it back, because we have some reason for it.
Does it look like theirs? Well, he's the one, the stormwater one, I don't know that that why. It was a discharge, but the stormwater one was, was the Madalo, was it two thousand and six? Was it a while ago?
That's one we did, but both of them we did, I think, it's two thousand and seven, and maybe they were recording it, so we read.
What do you think?
I don't know.
Have you talked about it?
That's what you like, right?
I remember there was. Before. Maybe it was this one, maybe.
Eight hundred people.
Oh, that's.
I would say, um, I'd get four hundred in my house.
But do you think that Saturday is only three to four hundred?
Oh, no.
Come off of the.